For our October 20th, 2015 meeting, it's our custom to start the meeting with an invocation, followed by the pledge of flag. If you'd like to join us, please stand.
Merciful Father, once again we come before you. We come, dear God, thanking you for all that you have done, both seen and unseen, the intangible as well as the tangible things that have happened in our lives. We ask that, Heavenly Father, that we continue to move forward on this island, that you be our guide. Change is taking place, dear Lord, and because of these changes, we have to make adjustments. We ask that you guide us in the direction that you would have us to go, that we accomplish those things that you would have us to accomplish, and if there's anything that displeases you, we ask for forgiveness. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask also that you bless the islanders who have come this evening. Bless the staff. Lead us, guide us, and protect us in all that we do. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will read the meeting procedures. The Planning Commission hears requests for preliminary subdivision plaits and site plans. The Planning Commission conducts public hearings on rezoning, certain planning documents, and ordinance amendments. The Planning Commission makes final decision on preliminary plaits, site plans, and conditional uses. That's not correct now, but anyhow, and makes recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on all other items. The planning staff presents the case to the Planning Commission during the staff report. This report evaluates how the proposal conformed to the Glen County Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinance, and other applicable regulations. The applicant shall have the opportunity to present their request to the Planning Commission. It is a responsibility of the applicant to make a presentation on the request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Citizens desired to speak in favor or in opposition to the request may then address the Planning Commission. Group should select a spokesperson who may ask the group to stand to be recognized. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate his speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chair will ensure that each side has approximately equal time. This time, we have some minutes to approve. August 18th, 2015 minutes. Anybody have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Move to approve.
A second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor signify with a raise of hand. Unanimous? The September 15th, 2015 minutes. Anybody? Any objections, questions, comment? Motion?
Move to approve.
A second. Motion and a second to approve the September 15th, 2015 minutes. All those in favor signify with a raise of hand. Unanimous? Mr. Hanley, any changes to our agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to beg the -- and Don, so the commission, I'd like to have Mr. Don Elliott read a statement to you all that affects two items that you have on the agenda tonight. Mr. Elliott is the chairman of the Joint Water and Sewer Commission.
As a preamble to the letter I'm going to read to you, I want to explain, just going to talk about a lift station, that the lift station 2032 is located at the intersection of Frederica Road and North Harrington. And that particular lift station controls and has processed through it everything that is north of the island from that point, and some southern and eastern locations, a little bit Sea Palms and South Harrington. So this is the letter that was -- I provided, Mr. Hanley, today. Reference capacity conditions of pump station 2032, St. Simon's Island. Here, Mr. Hanley. Pump station 2032 on St. Simon's Island conveys wastewater from basin 2032 as well as flows it receives from the northern portion of St. Simon's Island. Pump station 2032 presently operates above its calculated peak flow. Considering flows this station is obligated to receive from existing platted undeveloped lots at this time -- correction, undeveloped lot. At this time, it is believed that additional flows from the proposed new developments would further compound the capacity issues with this pump station. JWSC recognizes the problem with pump station 2032 and its forced main, and is currently evaluating corrective actions required to accommodate flow commitments and future potential flows. It is requested that Glen County does not approve new or additional preliminary or expedited developments served by pump station 2032. This request could be in excess of two years. If you have any questions regarding those requests, please contact Brunswick-Glen County Joint Water Sewer Commission, Office of Planning and Construction. Signed, Donald M. Elliott, Chairman. I'll entertain a few questions, but I won't get into the numbers. Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, would you go up to the mic and ask? Mr. Love, wait a minute. You've got to address us. Let us find out and tell us questions, and then we'll come back to you.
Yeah, this is on the agenda, so we need to organize ourselves.
Yeah, have a sec.
Just give us a minute.
Based on this, you have two staff reports that have now substantially changed from being compliant from Joint Water and Sewer to being noncompliant. They've indicated that electronically. We've not printed it out, but they -- that is positioned and is countermanded by this letter.
My question, Mr. Hanley, is this. We approved preliminary plat, and then you approved the construction plans.
Yes, sir.
Why would it not be -- we could either approve or disapprove the preliminary plat, but you would not do any construction until it was where you could tie in?
Because you will substantially render potential damages to property owners that the county may be liable for by vesting them certain rights that they currently have.
Because we're not approving any construction. We were only approving that one day they could.
No, sir, but you're giving them the right to submit them.
Okay, that's fine. I just want an answer to that.
Does this cover the two projects we have on?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And any other project that will come in the next two years? Is that what this is saying?
Yes, sir. Right now, yes.
If the projects would be to tie into the sewer, if the projects were large enough to -- or the lots were large enough for septic tanks, could that be go around this? I'm asking this as a question.
They would have to get a water and sewer bearings from the Board of Commissioners.
Does this apply to any existing lots of record?
No, sir. They are going to take steps to address existing lots of record somehow. It may be through a combination of using the VAT truck, putting a larger pump in, and increasing pressure in the line, but there is a finite amount of pressure you can put in that line before it erodes or and/or ruptures. It is both a pumping issue and a line size issue, very similar to 2030.
Can we address Mr. Elliott? Mr. Elliott, have we experienced problems there that are significant so far, or this is before we have problems, I guess?
Well, we've had problems with that pump station, yes.
Yeah, but we haven't had any spills like we had at the other one.
No.
Yeah. Good.
Any other questions? So in essence, this just says that the two that are before us will be put on hold?
You would have to vote to defer them indefinitely until such time as the capacity is available.
We still have to hear it, I guess.
My question with that is, we'll wait till we get there. Any other questions of Mr. Elliott on this?
I have a question.
Okay. There's no motion or anything for us to do.
My kind of on the questions was if the commissioners had questions.
Right. See, it's on an agenda item, so this is just information as it pertains to the items on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
I see no discussion necessary for what you have done. There's nothing for us to vote on or do. I see no discussion. It's information that there'll be no -- you have determined there'll be.
We can hear from the applicants when we bring up their item.
We'll bring them up, and then -- okay. I think there's no discussion on this.
Mr. Elliott, maybe you ought to stay here in case we --
Right. I would think it'd be appropriate for Mr. Elliott to stick around until we go through the two items on the agenda.
Can you do that? Thank you. Any other great items for us tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence would like to say something.
I would like to say something for the record, and I'd like for all of us here to think about it. My concern is what are we trying to accomplish here on St. Simon's Island? Right now, we're looking at possible cases to be reviewed on South Harrington as well as North Harrington, Harrington Lane. In that area alone, we have approximately 15 subdivisions. Out of those subdivisions, we have approximately 400 homes. You following me so far? How are we going to accommodate what is taking place on the island in this geographical area, Harrington Track? The reason for my concern is that we have children. There are children in the area, three, four, five-years-olds, and I've seen them riding their three-wheelers, riding their cycles, their battery-operated cars around the Coda Sack because there is no place for them to -- else for them to ride. There are no sidewalks, and as a result, the only place they have is the street. That's number one. You have joggers using the street, and they refuse to move over when you're going down the street. Someone's going to become seriously injured. Taking that in consideration, we've got to look at something. I mentioned earlier for planning and development, we need to look at possible sidewalks if we can for some of these areas, primarily because it's going to be hazardous, not only to the children. Who's going to be responsible? Would it be the builder? Would it be the county? Who would be responsible if someone is injured or possibly killed? Secondly, as we look at this, we have on South Harrington, a large number of canopy trees, beautiful trees, and you have the 10-wheelers, the 18-wheelers going through, and last week, the limbs for metal block were ripped off the trees. Either we have to get some signs up, no trucks passing, give a point to counteract this, or otherwise, we're going to continue having problems. I would prefer that we be proactive rather than reacting to these things. We need to look at it. We need to look at where we're going and do it in an organized manner. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
We currently have a countywide bike way pedestrian plan underway, and the consultant is RS&amp;H, and you can email them, Rachel up there, and give her your comments and recommendations. She's looking for that at this point. It's being run by the VATs Committee through their federal funding, and she's looking for recommendations about origin and destinations and everything about where sidewalks should be added.
Okay. After the meeting, I'd like to get name and pertinent information, and I'll follow through.
Mr. Hanley, just to piggyback on what you have said, the bike paths, you have, I don't want to say novices, but you have certain people that use the bike path, and those cyclists do not.
Right.
So, you know, that's an issue. Let's -- we can get back to this.
At this time, we will get onto the agenda to dispose, to handle preliminary plat 3104 Tabby Place Phase Two. Consider preliminary plat approval for a 49-lot subdivision. The partials are zone R6, one-family residential, and PD Plan Development. The proposed development is located on the southeast corner of North Harrington Road and Harrington Lane. Partial ID 0405291, 0405290, and a portion of 0405319, Vasca Kate with Old Plantation Group LLC applicant and owner. Mr. Hanley, before we start on this, something I was going to say, and just for education purposes, even though we really don't need it tonight, but I don't -- everybody understands. I keep getting emails. Preliminary plaits offer subdivisions. Regulations for preliminary plaits are under the subdivision ordinances. What we can do with preliminary plaits, I'm going to read this to you. There's a lot of scenes, confusions about it. Preliminary plaits are meant to geographically demonstrate the ability of a proposed layout to conform to requirements of the zoning ordinance, and this ordinance regarding lot size and width, street width, and similar features, and shall be reviewed by staff and report prepared for the Planning Commission regarding approval. Approved plat shall be valid for five years from the date of approval. Denied plaits must be re-submitted for approval. Plats which are submitted for review and are not submitted for review within one year of posting of the final review are considered withdrawn. What I'm trying to show to is preliminary plaits, we do not, this is questions that come up, we do not review drainage, we do not review items. This is all left up to construction. Once we have a preliminary plat approved, it then goes to the county development group, which then approves all those items that we have, you know, have brought up in other meetings about the drainage and other items such as that. Site plan and preliminary plat is for subdivisions, single-family homes. Correct, Mr. Hanley?
Yes, sir.
Site plan approval has a whole different list of items that we judge it on. Site plan approval is for basically on island, multi-family, and commercial. And in that, we go into traffic. We can go into egress and ingress and those items. For subdivisions, we don't do not review any of that. That is not within the purview of our ordinances and what we can do. Just for everybody's information, because I keep getting, and we had discussion at the last meeting about the width of roads. That's all defined in subdivision ordinances. The rider rays are defined, 40-foot, 50-foot, 60-foot, 70-foot, depending on what kind of road it is. As long as it meets those, meets all of that, that's all we can really look at and work on. So I want everybody to kind of understand that. So don't come to us and talk about why didn't you do something about the drainage, because that then belongs to the community development and the county engineer when they start building on a construction plan. Okay? That was just for education of all of us.
Well, you may be addressing that to me because I brought up.
No, I'm not addressing anybody other than there's a lot of questions come up.
Let me finish. You know, what I'm saying to you is that I asked a question to Mr. Hanley about drainage, and if something could be a part of what we were discussing at the time, to address drainage. And I also ask if drainage could be a part of the process in the beginning and not as you go on. And I still say drainage should be addressed in the beginning because it becomes an issue.
I get, we get, we had, we had discussion about it from the public at various meetings also. Anyway, and I get emails about it. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure we all understood and that everybody in the audience understood what we can and cannot do according to the ordinances. Now, start vote.
Okay. Based upon the information provided at the beginning of the meeting, what is your desire to do with this application? Do you wish to go through the presentation, or based upon the request from Joint Water and Sewer, do you?
I see no reason to go through it if we cannot do anything with it.
I'm just sure I have the speakers.
If it's your, it is your indication that we can, cannot approve or disprove it because it's.
You have a noncompliant on a critical issue.
I guess, Mr. Hanley, I guess one of the questions I would have would be if you knew this last week, would you request a defer this week? I mean, this is brand new information that came up.
Yeah, this is information. I got the letter about noon today.
Right, right. But I'm saying, but as a point of order, had you had the information when this item came before you, you would tell them that, no, we can't hear it to the applicant?
I think the applicant was made aware before the meeting of this issue, but I don't, yes, he would have been.
He would have been advised. He would have been.
Advised that we had this.
He wouldn't have made it here tonight.
That's his option as to whether he can.
Okay. Mr. Hanley, let me ask you, because it's been proposed and accepted, and in the race, we have 60 days from that time to make a decision on it. If he chose, if he decides not to, we can defer it, but if he says no, what happens?
Let me look at the exact wording on that.
Although we can deny it based on a noncompliance?
Yes, sir.
And if we deny it, what happens? He's got a year before he can come back?
No, sir. You would have to tell him what he has to do to make the property compliant.
Because basically, we're talking about both of them.
I don't see a 60-day in here, sir. I know it's in the zone, it's in.
I read it the other day, but I don't know which one I was reading.
It's in zoning ordinance, I know that. I don't think it's in the subdivision plat.
I think what Mr. Kirkendall is asking, unfortunately, we got to do tonight to make progress in legal.
Well, you have, I believe you have two options. One is to defer it indefinitely until such time as the Joint Water and Sewer advises that they do have capacity, or else you can deny it and said, you know, it needs to be updated until they do have evidence of capacity.
And deferring would be illegal?
Yes, sir. Let me read this exactly.
On page 25, is that where we are?
Yes, sir. I'm getting, yes.
Well, it just says 60 days. Yes, subdivision ordinance, page 25, is what.
Yes.
Page 24.
I don't see the defer option in here that you typically would have under normal rubber rules of order. So the only option is that you'd have to disapprove the preliminary plat and state the reason in writing there on the basis of that.
And then the applicant can take it to the county commission?
No, sir.
Yeah, we got final say.
Okay. He has to, he has no recourse on that.
In their appeals process, Mr. Hanley, that covers any decision we made?
There is a legal appeals process.
If you look on page 25, if the Planning Commission fails to approve or disapprove a preliminary plat, adjusted plat, a preliminary renewal within 60 calendar days after submission of the completed applicant, the subdivider may petition the courts to, courts in accordance with the state law. Any defer of a subdivider's written request shall be deemed to have extended decision But we can deny it based on.
Are you those things you read earlier?
No. Yeah, it doesn't meet the ordinance because waters, it has to be signed off. It doesn't meet the ordinance of, is that the way I would read it? I think that's what Mr. Hanley's saying. It doesn't meet the ordinance. It doesn't meet the ordinance, we can, we can deny it or accept it, but he's saying we can't really accept it because it does something else. The applicant would like to say something? Please go to the microphone and say something.
My name's Vasca Kate. Mr. Hanley, last week, this project met all requirements, correct?
Yes, sir.
Last week, if we would have had the meeting as planned before the fire marshal exited us in a room much smaller than this, when this room was empty, it would have been approved?
I don't know how the vote would have gone.
But it met our requirements. And isn't this pretty much a formality, this Island Planning Commission, when it comes to preliminary plaits, if it meets all requirements? Has ever been the history of your working in your position that one has been denied? If it meets all requirements?
I don't recall one being denied, but I don't recall this set of facts being in place.
So it was, we worked together, and we met all requirements due to this subdivision. It was approved by staff. We had a meeting on the schedule last week. The meeting was canceled, yet they stayed in the room and voted in reordances. We come back a week later, and at 12 o'clock before the meeting, we find out we have a sewer problem that could last two and a half years on an island with a population of 15,000 people? That, I don't, I just button that up. So now, it is approved by your staff, except for JWSC. So why wouldn't this be like other things we've had, where it becomes an approved subdivision, we move forward and try to run parallel paths while they fix their mess?
Mr. Kate, I've got a question for you. Did you discuss your subdivision plat with Water and Sewer before your application?
We submitted it, and I have returned comments from everybody that it was in check. The only reason, that was last Tuesday, when I came to the meeting, which I was thrown out of. Now I come back, and I learned 10 minutes before the meeting that I'm not compliant with Joint Water and Sewer. It's insanity.
So your answer is, yes, indeed, you did.
Yes, we have, I have written approval from JWSC that it was compliant, that, and I have never written, can prove it now. At a meeting earlier at the county offices, Todd Khan came up to me and said, we got an issue, there's going to be a moratorium on the north end of St. Simon's for the next two, two and a half years. We'll see how it works out. We'll hopefully get it done sooner, but we don't have the money.
I've got a question for Mr. Elliott, if I may. Oh, Mr. Kate, if you'd let him address the same issue. When, when, when did you know what? I mean, this is, this is a question.
This is Tuesday, right?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, Mr. Kate did do what he thought he was supposed to do.
On Monday, on Monday, I started doing due diligence on some things, this being one of them, and I started asking questions. And I asked questions of people that are in the rank and file, that deal with the pump stations, lift stations every day. And I became aware that there was a problem with the pump station and the lift station. And at that time, I was told that it was over the, and this is why I don't want to get too far into the numbers or anything, over the EPD peak rate. That, I then asked questions about, what did we do on the preliminary plat approval? And they said, well, it was okay, that's what we said, but we listed on the, there were comments in the document for, I believe it's Tabby 2, that said that there may be downstream issues. I felt that the staff had not been clear. Is it buildable or is it not buildable? And I ascertained, after I talked to my, to Mr. Klein, Todd Klein, and we called Angela Bryant, who's doing our master plan, that we had a problem. And Todd and I tried to have a meeting with Mr. Hanley and Paul Andrews on Monday afternoon. I'm getting my, my, no, that's correct, but we had a, he was, he was full and we had a big meeting with many people from the camp county. But we could not get a meeting, but I did brief Commissioner Booker on the problem, who briefed Commissioner Provenzano, and we started talking, and then Mr. Hanley came over this morning. We drafted the letter, which we had planned to do, and provided to Mr. Hanley.
So.
This is, this is, this is the problem line, as I see it. We are stuck in what our words say. Bottom line is, you can't pump any more stuff through that line, and we are going to work such that those platted approved projects continue during this period. We're just asking that no future development occur until we take care of it.
Just seems so, this is. Just, just a second, Mr.
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess, your staff engineer is the one that made, that made the final determination, I assume, or he was part of that determination?
He was part of the determination, but I, if anybody, you know, I'm the one that directed the activity.
Right, right, but, but I mean, it's, did you have engineering consultants?
That's correct.
And who were they, besides your staff engineer?
That's correct, I'm not an engineer, so I have to rely on what other people tell me. I just ask questions and listen to responses.
Yeah. So, so there were, there were other engineers other than your staff engineer involved in?
That's correct.
And making the determination?
There's Angela Bryant, who does our master plan. She actually works for Full Waters, but she's under a subcontract to ATM, which is contracted to do the master plan. Our thought is, the earlier we tell the developer that there's an infrastructure problem, the better it is for him, so that he doesn't have to incur any cost.
What you can see, our position is, is you've put us on the spot. I mean, obviously, developer did what he thought he was supposed to do.
I understand that.
And, and he, he made recommendations through our, through our staff, and, and then at the 11th hour, it does seem kind of like, wow, this is.
I understand that. And, and we'll produce the numbers and so people can look at them, but.
May I address?
Yes, sir.
No.
Mr. Kate or Mr. Elliott?
Kate, Mr. Kate.
Okay.
Mr. Kate, may I ask, you never know what is and how it will come out. I was prepared last Tuesday night to make a motion to deny this application because of its failing to meet 613, 613 of the old code, and I believe I would have been successful in doing that, but who will know?
Yes, sir, but I'm working with staff who are qualified on this, you know, and David Hanley disagreed with you about that, and we also came up with a solution to satisfy your request if need be. So therefore, it would not have been denied, because we met our requirements, and I'm very attuned to the rules. So, you know, and this was not my first radio with this Joint Water and Sewer. Last time, at least they told me 10 minutes before the meeting. Last time, I learned about it in the meeting, just as everybody else. And at the last meeting, when Steve Swan suggested, he said he had gone through every basin on St. Simons, and 2051 was the only problem, you know? And now I come in here at the end. I just want you all to vote on this and see where it goes, because I don't, I don't think y'all really have the right to deny a preliminary plat. No one's ever been denied. If it meets county regulations, this is just a formality to let the public speak. Y'all aren't authoritative on it, just like Hanley is and his staff. If it meets their test and the rules, then it goes through. There's nothing else to it. This is just a forum to let y'all bubble up stuff before it goes across the street and becomes a final plat. And so the vote is ceremonial, in my opinion. I'd like to take the vote.
Anyway, Mr. Kate, it's not ceremonial if it doesn't meet the ordinances, so this is where we are. If it doesn't meet the ordinances, we would turn it down. We are trying to determine if it meets the ordinances or not tonight. Now, there is a great question you asked, would it met the ordinance last Tuesday? An answer to that is yes.
It would have met last Tuesday, and it meets your county ordinances. The county ordinances.
Still one question about the.
But we satisfied that with staff, I had numerous thoughts.
We don't know that yet, okay? Not disagreeing with you, we don't know, let's, let's assume that.
We've gone through it penitently and covered everything that he has brought up.
That they brought up, we might bring up something different, that's why we have meetings.
Even if this is a week delayed, I think most all the cards were played.
If we were to approve the preliminary plat, Mr. Hanley, then the construction would definitely be stopped, because you would not give any permits.
No, sir.
Correct?
No, sir, I don't have that legal ability.
You have to approve the construction.
If they, if you approve the preliminary plat, he has a legal right to submit construction plans.
But you have a legal right to turn down construction plans if he can't tie into the sewer? Is that correct or incorrect?
I can't answer that question, but they're asking if you can't tie into the sewer system.
Right, you're not going to let it tie into the sewer system. You would not sign off on a building permit tied into the sewer system?
That's correct.
And they would have to sign off on a permit. Am I correct for that or incorrect?
Yeah, for a building permit, yes, but you let, you would let them go further down the investment list, which then causes them to have potential increased damages beyond where they're at right now. And they also then increase legal vesting rates that they currently do not have if this preliminary plat is not approved.
What do you even do, Mr. Chairman? I have no idea. We could vote.
For the record.
Well, it's not a public hearing, so we will, we may ask for some opinions later, but we're not right now.
Dale Provenzano, Chairman of County Commission, in light of the fact Chairman Kirkendall and the rest of the planning board that all this information came to us pretty new, came to Mr. Kate, obviously, pretty new also, I'm not so sure Mr. Hanley's advice, and you guys can do what you need to do, to defer this, to allow further, we need more time, y'all need more time to investigate the charges that have been brought forward by Water and Sewer. I'm not so sure there's any harm in deferring this to allow us, you know, to dig into what's going on and to find out truly how long this may be delayed or not be delayed. Just a suggestion on my part, but this, this has all come to us pretty new, and, you know, to vote it up or down at this point in time may, may not be in the best interest of the planning boards or the Board of Commissioners or Mr. Kate. I think there needs to be some time to investigate what's come before us today. Just, just my thoughts.
That was one of my questions. We, with a 60-day rule, if we, if we were to defer this to the next meeting, we would still be within that 60 days, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And we can ask for deferral for more study?
Yes, sir, or at that time, you could take one of the other actions.
At that time, right. We, we could, we legally could do a deferral till the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
To then, then all, all those things that we have?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we defer this item and for further study until the next meeting.
November 15th, is it?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, November 17th. Is there a second to that motion, and then we'll discuss it? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
We have a second to that motion. Discussion on the motion to defer PP 3104, Tabby Place Phase 2 until the November 17th meeting, where we can get discussion, especially from our legal, what the legal aspects of this are, and others, whatever that may be. Discussion on the motion.
I would like to just state for the record that the application that was submitted for tonight's meeting is the same application that was submitted for last week's meeting. And while there is a claim that, that the 613 was satisfied, it is not satisfied in this application for us tonight.
And we can discuss that in a deferral, because there may be other things that come up that, that are not weigh that, or, anyway. Any other discussion on the motion? I assume that we are ready to vote on the motion. All those in favor of deferring PP 3104 until November the 17th, our next meeting, signify with a raise of hands? Unanimous. We will bring it back up at that time and hopefully have, or we will, we'll have to make a decision at that time on something. All right, next one, PP 3105, Stillwater Phase 3. This is the same, same issue?
Yes, sir. This goes through the same lift station.
Same lift station, same item. Would the applicant for that like to say anything? Mr. Hanley, I don't know if you needed this, go ahead. The applicant like to say anything about that?
Like Mr. Kate, had it been voted on last Tuesday, I was in compliance with everything. I know of no issues that are outstanding in that subdivision, and so it's a little.
Go up there and speak, sir, please. I'm sorry. State your name, et cetera.
I'm Frank Deloche. I mean, it's a little disappointing that in, I guess, six days' time, the facts have changed dramatically. His engineers looked at it last Tuesday. There's a thorough process by which they go through to approve these things, and so how, how it's possible that everybody signed off last week, and all of a sudden, in the last six days, it's changed, is just a little unfathomable to me. I just wonder what they're doing over there at Joint Water and Sewer. Yes, I think we all do.
Any questions of Mr. Deloche?
I've got a question for Mr. Deloche. Mr. Deloche, that, that subdivision plan has been planned a long time to include the second phase, has it not?
Since the early 2000s, 2004, 2005.
And so this, this has always been sitting there, waiting for you to pull the trigger on?
Yeah, it was engineered back then as well. It was never submitted, but engineered, and we just waited until the demand was there.
It's Phase 2. Still one.
It's Phase 3.
Yeah, it's actually Phase 3, but.
Phase 3, yeah.
Yeah. So I've just been patient, waiting for the, you know, waiting for the right time. I'm down to, I believe, three lots in that subdivision. I've been developing it for, I think, 11 years.
Yes, sir. I'm making, make a motion to defer for, for further counsel on what we can do until the next meeting.
Is there a second to the motion to defer?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to defer till the November 17th meeting? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify with a raise of hand? Unanimous? We will do something at that meeting, once we hear from various people, especially the Next item. VP 3112-504 Beachview Drive, consider request to replace existing awnings due to natural wear and tear on the awning material. The site is located at 504 Beachview Drive, approximately 100 feet southeast of its intersection with Mallory Street. The property is also adjacent to the county-owned Postel Park. Partial ID 0404649. Bob and Blake Merrill, applicants and owners. Staff?
Good evening. My name is Julie Grimm, and I'm with Glen County Planning and Zoning. I'm filling in for Casey Dagenhart, who's out this evening. VP 3112 is currently zoned, village mixed use, and is within the island preservation overlay. The existing land use is a restaurant, a half shell, a retail space, St. Simons Tea Shop, and professional offices on the second and third floor. The property is adjacent to the Postel Park, as well as Barbara Jeans next door, approximately, excuse me, three, 100 feet from the intersection of Mallory Street and Beachview Drive. This is looking south at the property with the existing awnings. This is looking east at the property with the profile of the existing awnings. The applicant would like to replace the first floor awning, which spans the entire building, with black corrugated metal roofing. The proposed building will extend, I'm sorry, the proposed roofing will extend 8.4 feet from the building, which is the same distance as the current awning. The metal support columns for the metal roofing will be wrapped in cypress wood. The awnings on the second and third floors will be replaced with a black canvas awning. There are no plans to change the frame of these awnings. Staff determined the application is complete and contains the necessary information. The Island Planning Commission may approve, defer, or deny the application. These are your possible motions. I move to approve application VP 3112. I move to deny, or I move to defer. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Hanley, I'm, I'm all for this. I think, I think outside eating is certainly in vogue, and the more of it we have in the village, I think it makes it attractive. But I do have a question, not so much about this one, but about the next one that comes before us, is this, is this structure is, is over the property line? And you, can you explain to me how?
There would, there'll be an encroachment item brought before the board to legally allow that. It's an encroachment upon, removal upon demand, along with our, similar to our other encroachments that we have.
Okay, so that'll go before the?
Board of Commissioners.
The Board of Commissioners for, for them to approve?
Yes, sir.
And so, and so our, our approval will be contingent upon that approval?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question on that, because in this write-up, it said it would have been done in October 15th meeting, and I did not see that in the agenda item.
If I get put on that agenda, it wasn't legally ready yet, so. I will, will say for the record, I have had to communicate with Commissioner Watson, and she would recommend that it remain as green on, on, on the awning color, or, or, I guess, natural, natural anodized silver or whatever. I'll defer to Robert on that type of thing.
Any other questions of staff? This time applicant? Applicant here, ah, there you go.
Representative. Representative.
Hi, I'm Larry Bryson, agent. The applicant is here. I think that y'all probably know Blake Merrill, this is Gordy's son Blake. We're basically here to answer any questions that you may have. I think it's pretty straightforward, pretty simple. The awning is kind of worn and showing age and discoloration. They'd like to replace it with up metal instead of the canvas, so it'll be a longer lasting, a little less maintenance. And, and their preference would be in black, if, if you'd consider that.
Larry, is, is that going to be hot under there, you think? I mean, just, just ask it, I don't care.
It's northern exposure.
I guess it'd keep my french fries warm, wouldn't it?
It would.
So you would rather have it black than green, as Ms. Watson would ask maybe the two?
Prefer it black or natural. We have green up there and we were just trying to do a little change. As far as the heat issue with the green or the black, I feel like it would probably be the same. Natural is just as well.
Yeah, I think, I think they actually make, make a black the supposedly better, Larry, you may know about that? Better than black, black?
I think we ought to leave it up to the applicant and listen.
If they, I'm just asking, Ms. Watson asked, and that was a concern, she sent a note and asked him to ask that. We've asked it, he'd rather have it black, so, any other questions of applicant?
What color is the wood going to be?
It's cypress. Cypress is natural.
What's it going to paint or what?
It's got holes in it.
Gordy, what's it going to be?
Natural.
Okay.
Natural wood.
Natural wood. But you aren't going to paint it?
No, not as of now. We have no intention to.
Any other questions of the applicant? This is not a public hearing, but, I may sit down, thank you. This is not a public hearing, but if anybody would like to ask any questions, we'd be glad to have you do that. You have questions about this one?
Oh, no, no, no.
About this one? About this issue? That's okay. I see no, no questions from anybody? Looking for a motion?
I move to approve application VP 3112.
Second, would you add to that, with the approval of the County Commission on the...
Oh, with the, contingent upon the approval of the County Commission.
On the revocable permit?
On the revocable permit, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I seconded again. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify with a raise of hands. Unanimous. Mr. Hanley, you sent us a traffic study and I would like to have a workshop, to have that discussed and talked about, where we might be able to understand it a little better? If that would be possible?
Yes, sir.
And we also have a ordinance that the County Commission asks us to look at?
Yes, sir. I should have that drafted up, it's a simple amendment. I will try to set up a time and I will see if I can get the traffic consultant either be down or else on the phone available.
That'd be great.
The Commission directed an alternative study to one of the recommendations today. And I will tell you, I'm, we're endeavoring to get it online, it's 868 pages long.
We're going to have a long work session.
Mr. Chairman, may, may I also request that, at this work session, that we take up item one on the memo I sent out last week and, and the memo I sent today, back in that up, that we discuss what the obligation and, and the responsibilities of the Island Planning Commission are?
Fine, we'll put that on agenda. For, for Dell sitting here, what the County Commissioners wanted to have done was the, for the buffer ordinance to exempt the village...
Mixed use district.
Mixed use area. And then think, and if you look along there, it probably, we can discuss that, where that was, was the purpose, they, they thought that, that buffers did not fit with along Ocean Boulevard, that way down in that area. And we can discuss that at length, okay?
We, we need to take off the, the awning to put the buffer.
I understand, I'm like, anyhow, that, that's what was the request and we, I asked them to let it come back to us without, and discuss it before they approve it. And they agreed to do that, so we will have that at a work session. So we'll be thinking about that.
I will set up the meeting and I'll do a poll when everyone can best make the meeting and I'll see when the traffic consultant can have the one recommendation, which is the last one on the recommendation schedule involves a traffic circle at the Rika and Sea Island Road that the Commission directed to see what, what it would take to do lines or lanes equivalent to getting the same service level, so.
I move we adjourn.
Second.